I'd like to call this meeting the Cholo City Council to order, show that all council members are present with the acceptance of Vice Mayor who has to be excused tonight. Tonight, I've asked Councilman Judd to lead us in the invocation, followed by Councilman Whipple to lead us in the pledge. If you all would like to join us, you may do stand at this time.
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet together this evening, and we're grateful for our police officers and our public servants, and that they can be with us this evening. We ask that Thou bless them and keep them safe as they keep us safe. We ask that Thou will bless our firefighters, our military personnel. Please bless our city staff, that they can be safe and accomplish the things that they need to. Please help us to make decisions tonight that would benefit the public, and we say this in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Whipple. Councilman Judd, I appreciate that. You know, we meet the first and third Tuesday of the month, so you guys are all welcome to come back. It's kind of nice to see humans out there. We see the faces that we normally see, too, so I appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is call to public, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the Cholo City Council may do so at this time. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the City Council as a whole and not to any individual member. Issues raised shall be limited to those within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the City Council cannot discuss or act on the items that are presented at this time. At the conclusion of the call to public, individual City Council members may respond to criticism made by those who have spoken, ask staff to review a matter, or ask that the matter be put on a future agenda.
I have a couple here. First one is Gordon Terrasini.
Thanks for having me. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm here this evening with a request for this governing board to put pressure on the Forest Service to actively start closing our forests because of our extreme dry conditions we're having. I do realize that we're not in the fire season yet, but we soon will be, and the conditions will be far more extreme. Granted, we cannot stop a lightning fire. However, we could sure limit the fires caused by humans that they're causing and all those that don't live in this region. I hope this does happen soon. Thank you for your time this evening.
I can tell you that we are meeting now with, we're in fire season year-round, so we're on top of it, I promise. We're looking. Thank you, Gordon. I have Mr. Frenault.
Good evening, Mayor and staff. I have a couple of things to talk about. I don't really like to come up here much, but I've been asked to come up and haven't, and I thought with all the law enforcement here, it might be a good time to come up. Anyway, a couple of things I wanted to talk about is, the last thing I want is more government here, especially when it comes to emissions. And I think there's just a few here that really concern me, and some of them, it's been a month or so, I was behind, I was about five cars at the stoplight across from the Hamptons, and there was a flatbed truck that when he took off, I've thrown military smoke grenades before, and this thing would outclass them. And the second car behind that truck, nobody was moving. The second car behind that truck pulled out to get in the middle lane to get around it, and the other person that was in his lane came flying by and almost hit him. I mean, if it had hit it on the driver's side, it probably would have been major injury or fatality. There's got to be something that we can do with some of these people that obscure the vision when they take off. I've got a diesel truck, and mine doesn't do that. The other thing is noise. I live about a half a mile from here in the middle of Cholo, and I can tell you when a vehicle gets to the intersection of 60 and 260, comes down to the light, heads all, I can hear them all the way down to the hospital. That can't be stock exhaust system. It's noise. And I was brought up in Phoenix, and I had a 55 Chevy, a 57 Chevy. I thought I was pretty cool. I had Hollywood glassback mufflers on it, and they are nothing like these. And I got cited for loud noise. It's just unreal, the noise that these guys pollute. I can't imagine being next to one of them when they blast off. And the last item is every once in a while, I know the emergency helicopters that come in for the hospital are a great thing, but I was wondering if there's some other route they can take other than right over Pine Haven where I live. 2:30 in the morning, it sounds like an incoming chopper to evacuate people in the line of battle. I mean, it's really loud. It'll wake you up. Maybe they can't do anything, I don't know. Maybe they can come another route, and maybe they can go a little higher and come down. I don't know, but it's really, really loud. That's my only concerns, and I hope to have a great meeting here, I think, with all the people in blue. I wore the uniform at one time. It's a good day. We're all safe.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. We'll have staff look at that. I don't know anything about a noise order. I know you do for concerts and stuff and flight paths. I know we've had that discussion before, too, so we'll look into it. Mr. Frenault, thank you. Next item on the agenda is for special events, Public Safety Awards and Recognition Presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it, everyone being here tonight. I look out there and I see a lot of years of service for the city of Cholo, and I'm just really grateful for everyone that has come here tonight and all the service that you render to the city of Cholo, our Senior Patrol, the Rangers, the Animal Control, the Dispatchers, all our community partners, and all that work in the Police Department. One of the, you guys know that one of the, I guess, the themes or mantras that we have is to be 1% better every day. And if we do that, and those small improvements, it leads to large improvements over time. And the Police Department, I think, has really taken that to heart, and they've done a lot to be more efficient, to be better in everything that they do, to do more with less than they've had in the past. And so we appreciate everything that you do to be 1% better every day. And I just want you to know that from the city staff, we appreciate all of our partners in the Police Department. With that, I'll turn it over to Chief Prolos to do the awards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mayor Council, thank you for the opportunity to let us be here tonight. This is the opportunity council takes to recognize our employees, our partners in the community, and to let the citizens know the great things that our people are doing. Ms. Brown talks about 1% better. You know, the council sees the numbers, but I'd like to share some of those so the public can hear them, because every one of these men and women behind you have worked as a team and have done some phenomenal things, and that's reflected in these numbers. In 2024, our officers and police aides handled 32,126 incidents, responded to 16,052 calls for service, made 6,465 traffic stops, issued 4,598 citations, and made 1,368 arrests. Our communications center handled 66,187 incidents, handled 37,750 calls for service, just over 21,000 911 calls, and handled over 111,000 non-emergency calls. Through their community policing efforts and targeted enforcement, these men and women reduce our calls for service by 15% across the board, almost 3,000 calls. We also have a new technology called SpiderTech that provides the public an opportunity to provide feedback on customer satisfaction. For 2024, we had a public approval rating of 4.7 out of 5 across all levels of the department, one of the highest ratings that SpiderTech has seen. So I think that puts into focus what it really means to be 1% better every day and what the results can be. So with that, I would like to start the awards. If council would like to come down to do those presentations, I will call out the names, and as they're walking up, I'll read out their award citations. Our first award is a Community Service Award, which will be going to the Arizona Rangers Cholo Company. If you'd like to come down. So this will be going to Captain Craig Boston, Lieutenant Keith Johnson, Lieutenant Don Childers, Master Sergeant Randy Mifflin, Sergeant Ken Steinbrecher, Sergeant Steve Buck, Sergeant Ray Brown, Ranger Shawna Hallowith, and Ranger Kevin Carpenter. They've helped with community events such as the Elks Lodge Gun Show, Cholo High School Graduation, the Arts Alliance, Cruising the Rim Car Show, Cholo Days, Derby Down the Deuce, Deuce Has Gone Wild, Fourth of July Freedom Festival and Parade, Medieval Mayhem, Battle of the Bands and Vans, Halloween Truck Retreat, White Mountain Clothed Child, and the White Mountain Sirens and Sleigh Bells. We thank them for their service. for Tots. Toys for Tots partnership on the White Mountain Sirens and Sleigh Bells has provided toys for over 300 kids in our community over the last two years. had two nominations from employees within the department or members of other agencies. It's very rare, but the first one we will start with is DPS Captain Jeffrey Sharp. So on December 6, 2024, Captain Jeffrey Sharp with the Arizona Department of Public Safety witnessed a fatal traffic collision at the intersection of 60 and McNeil. Captain Sharp, who was off-duty, quickly reacted to the chaos, securing the scene, administering critical first aid, and worked tirelessly to coordinate with emergency services responding. Captain Sharp's quick thinking, professionalism, and unwavering commitment to ensuring the safety and well-being of those involved was truly remarkable. Captain Sharp's ability to remain calm under pressure and his empathetic approach to assisting victims, bystanders, and other responders set an exemplary standard for others. It is clear that his training, skill, and character all contributed significantly to the effective handling of this difficult situation. Captain Sharp not only brought comfort to those affected, but also upheld the highest standards of public service and compassion. Thank you, Captain Sharp. Detective Hall was able to identify and apprehend a major player in the distribution of fentanyl and dangerous drugs in our region, which was located right next to one of our schools. Detective Hall's ability to remain calm under pressure, collaborate effectively, and adhere to all legal protocols was exemplary. Detective Hall's strong investigative skills, determination, and unwavering commitment to protecting our community reflect the highest standards of law enforcement. Officer Clark has displayed outstanding service, exceptional performance, and tireless effort in developing and maintaining the Cholo Police Department's K-9 program. Officer Clark's dedication, professionalism, and the skill exhibited by his K-9 SID have had a remarkable impact on our community. The rigorous training, discipline, and care evident in the K-9 program not only underscores its operational effectiveness, but also highlights Officer Clark's compassion and dedication. Officer Clark's dedication, persistence, and investigative expertise has directly contributed to a safer community and serves as a model for other departments and inspires confidence among our citizens. All right. Our next commendation goes to Officer Stavros Castillo. Officer Castillo was off-duty but recognized a possibly impaired driver on a busy stretch of US 60. He called to get an on-duty officer to handle the situation, but the vehicle was moving so dangerously in traffic, he knew it needed to be stopped before causing a head-on collision. Using his personal vehicle, Officer Castillo pulled in front of the erratic driver and gradually slowed down, forcing the driver to pull over to a stop. Officer Castillo discovered the driver was not driving under the influence, was having a medical emergency. He was able to get medical crews to respond and treat the driver. Thank you. Next commendation goes to Officer Justin Murrell. Officer Murrell observed a vehicle commit a minor traffic violation. He then followed the vehicle and observed several suspicious actions before conducting a traffic stop. The occupants of the vehicle acted suspiciously and were untruthful, leading Officer Murrell to the discovery of evidence of drug violations. A search of the vehicle was conducted, and Officer Murrell was able to determine the suspects had recently committed a burglary of a local pharmacy. Thanks to his being active, alert, and thorough, these burglars were apprehended, and over 15,000 in property was recovered. The primary suspect was also sentenced to nearly 10 years in prison. In 2024, Records Custodian Cassie Machino was subject to six major state audits of various records maintained by the Cholo Police Department. Each audit was comprehensive and exhausting, requiring hours of preparation. In each audit, the Cholo Police Department performed exceptionally well due to Cassie's professionalism, accountability, and established systems of checks and balances. Cassie's commitment to excellence, attention to detail, and outstanding analytical skills contributed significantly to the success of these audits. Her efforts in ensuring accuracy and compliance have set a benchmark for professionalism and diligence, both regionally, I can't talk tonight, both regionally and at the state level. Thank you, Cassie. Our last commendation goes to, as I said, there were two people from other agencies. This one is to Priscilla de La Garza with Pinetop Lakeside Police Department. Priscilla's unwavering commitment to spreading joy, providing support, and making a positive impact has brought hope and happiness to hundreds of children in our community through the White Mountain Sirens and Sleigh Bells event. Priscilla worked tirelessly to fundraise, advertise, coordinate, and make this Christmas charity a beautiful event that spreads the spirit of giving throughout our community. Thank you, Priscilla. Our next award is Volunteer of the Year Award, which goes to Beverly Graham with the Senior Patrol. Unfortunately, Beverly is not here tonight, so her plaque is not there. Just a note on Beverly, though, she worked in 2024. She donated 1,031 hours of volunteer time. So. Our next award is Outstanding Service Award, goes to Robert Shamasco with the Senior Patrol. Bob has volunteered with the Senior Patrol for 14 years, donating 7,116 hours, and altogether, Senior Patrol has donated 8,292 hours in 2024. The next award is the Unit Citation, which usually goes to a unit of the department that has performed exceptionally through the prior year. This year, that goes to our Field Training Officers Unit, which is under the command of Sergeant Ashley Ellsworth, and includes Officer Justin Butler, Officer Elijah Toth, Officer Jamie Clark, Officer Clayton Hunt, and Officer Stavros Castillo. So these next awards are not based on any single incident or act. They are based upon overall performance throughout the year, on feedback from the community, feedback from peers. So the first one is Civilian of the Year, goes to Police Assistant Austin Skaggs. Our next award goes to Supervisor of the Year, Sergeant Alan Rogers. Next is Dispatcher of the Year, goes to Desiree Pease. I will note Desiree is currently enrolled in the FBI Trilogy Leadership Program, and actually had to drive home tonight in order to accept the award. Officer of the Year goes to Officer Toby McIntyre. The last award we have tonight is the Chief's Award. This award goes to somebody who has gone above and beyond to advance the department's mission, to serve the community, and has been just an outstanding member of either the department or the community. And this year's Chief's Award goes to Detective James Barber. Mayor Council, once again, thank you again for taking the time to recognize these employees and the fantastic work that they have done throughout the year, and thank you for your support.
Absolutely. Before you leave, Brad, you know, each year you do this, I was just talking to Councilman Clark, it's amazing that you do this. I mean, we can't thank them guys enough, for sure, everything they do, but one of these days we're going to give you a plaque, because what you've done to this department is amazing. But thank each and every one of you out there from the bottom of our heart, on my heart, for sure. You guys, when we go to bed at night, I know I feel safe, so appreciate everything.
I just want to say thank you for everything, all your service, all your hard work, and I sure appreciate it. And I feel a lot safer with you guys out there.
Thank you all.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I've been on the council for almost five years now, and roughly that's about 60 meetings, and give or take a couple. And every single time the council meets, we pray for you. I hope you guys know that. You, the ladies, the men, and ladies and gentlemen of the law enforcement are the heart and soul of our community. Without you going out every day and doing the hard things that you do, our community would not be what it is. Like the mayor said, we all feel comfortable because of what you do. You know, we had a tragedy happen this morning, which some of our officers had to go see something that nobody should ever have to go see, and we know that it pays a toll on each one of you, and those of you who are here tonight to support them, their, you know, their wives, the husbands, the children, we want to, I personally want to thank you for putting up with the difficulties of police work and how sometimes the job doesn't just stop at the station. They bring these types of things home, and you have to deal with that. And so we want to thank all of you who are the support of these men and women who work so diligently to make our community safe. We want you to know also that we don't just pray for you, we actually, we have your back as a council. Every time the chief or the commanders or the city manager brings something before us, it's almost without hesitation, we approve it, because we know what a vital resource you are to our community. So in a time where people are, and communities are talking about defunding the police and not, you know, looking at alternative ways to keep their community safe, we're not that community. I look here and I look at Officer Hall, I look at Stavi, I looked at some of you, I've known you all my life, and I think that as much as I'm a part of this community, you're a part of this community. And we wouldn't have Sholo without each one of you. So we want you to know how much we appreciate you, and know that not only are we praying for you and that we have your back, we want you to be able to retire at the end of your career and look back and call Sholo home, because without you, we wouldn't really have this community that we're all fortunate to call home. So thank each one of you, and thank you for the time and service that you put forth on our behalf. So thank you.
I just want to say thank you. Bless you guys, you do God's work, and God bless you, God bless the city of Sholo. Thank you.
I just want to echo that, and thank you for your time and service. I have family that's in law enforcement, and I know what you guys go through, so I appreciate it. Feel a lot safer with you out there, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you very much. Thank you. We're going to take a short break, so some of you can probably go back to work. Take a short recess. Thank you, sir.
You think it's a little ancient here.
Every time they take a picture, I go like this. Like, he won't get more votes than me. I got a one percenter, I got a city Sholo.
Oh, we got it.
You got like 10 of them.
Oh, thank you.
Just really excited, just really excited. Where did you go?
If I could reference.
I love her.
But it's still new, we only went through the packet, we got it five o'clock.
The group is a little unusual, so to sing with them.
Then the day we haven't had a chance to look at the paper.
So when Brandon pulled that speaker close to him, that was huge. Everybody needs to pull their speaker close to him. Yeah, when he talked, it was.
Yeah, so he has.
Well, yeah, 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 yeah. So that was like the others, they pulled closer to him, because once it picked up his voice, I could tell that it was being audible in the back.
Yeah.
Whereas I don't know that how much, how audible it is in the back. I could actually hear it coming through the speakers. Could you hear, yeah?
Oh, is it? Okay. See how Brandon is? For trying this, Justin.
I really think that, that really amplified his voice.
I thought he was going to blow our eardrums off. No, just kidding. Brandon does, he talks louder than this. Well, it's exciting. Did you hear where his voice are going? I have to learn Spanish now. He words in Spanish. Coca-Cola, quesadilla, mango taco. I will be there tomorrow. Sent this to John, this is my son. He's a full-on listener, watch this. He's up to his knees. And that's probably not, that's probably like emeritus water, you know, like that. He's like, it's raining for four, five days.
Are they talking about?
I heard she like said, and used to have.
They are already? Usually I'm not there. Good, yourself?
It was nice to see you back.
All right, take care.
Brian, Tyra, old timers. You know I'm here, really? This is not a, this is not a joyful image.
Right. All right, let's keep going. Me and Justin thought we'd be out of here at 7:45.
What?
On Owens sometimes.
Coming around the long way, huh? You're making the, you're making the circuit here. How are you? Love the belt buckle, that's beautiful. Did you forget something? That is gorgeous. Oh, whatever.
This is a big challenge. I recognize the city clerk, and I, she was out of Pine Top City Clerk. Earrings, they're city clerk. Yes, I knew I knew her, but I.
She's awesome. That is gorgeous, yeah, that would have been a huge bracelet, that is gorgeous.
You ready? We got executive session, that's going to be a long.
We need a challenge coin for the council.
He's got to get us.
The mayor with his Fu Manchu. Can we put that on the, we need a, we need a challenge coin for the council. We need to put like a Deuce de Clubs with you and your Fu Manchu on there.
I got that picture.
I know, that's what I'm saying, that's awesome.
All right, well, we'll move on to our meeting. Next item on the agenda is the presentation of the mid-year financial report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. I almost went to the consent calendar, Mr. Johnson.
Well, the budget is kind of anticlimactic after everything else, so.
So Commander McNeil locked the door, not to keep people out, but to keep people in.
Yeah.
Only one more problem, we have one more door.
Hey, Mayor and Council, tonight, we're just, I just want to go through some, a quick update on where we're at through January on our financials. So when we're looking at numbers, 50% is kind of where we want to be. We may see some a little higher and lower for both revenues and expenses. If there are any questions as we go through, please ask, and we'll try and get those answered, and I'll try and highlight some of those differences. We do have the sales tax chart, we have the key revenues and expenses compared to budget, and then we'll do the debt service review. So starting off, we have general fund revenues, and you can see most of those are in pretty good shape. The first one that I would like to call out is the police, the police revenues. And this number is a little low, it's because when we put this together, we hadn't received our billings for the dispatch center yet. I did check the general ledger today, and that has been received, and it's around 51%. So that one's on track. With Parks and Recreation, that one's a little low as well, but we do have a lot of spring sports coming up for the youth, and I expect that number to climb with those enrollments. Everything else looks pretty good, the grants is somewhat unpredictable, just because of things that are going on in the federal government in the last week or two, but we expect everything to be completed as budgeted for in that. On the expense side, most of these you'll notice are less than 50%, which is where we would ideally like to be for expenses. The first one I'd like to call out is the city magistrate, and the case for this one is, and is common with some of the other ones too, is we make the purchases in July, so they aren't necessarily spread out over the whole year. So in this one, we have a contract with the county to pay for the court clerk, and we pay that in July, so that's why this one's at 65%. And then another one that's a little high is the information services, similar activity there. The IT director made the purchase for all the computer refresh for the desktops early in the fiscal year, so that was a pretty big expense that drove that cost up above 50%. Everything else is on track and looking normal. This chart shows our sales tax collections through December. We had a couple of months that were a little bit less than the prior year, but we, four of the six exceeded the prior year, so we're looking good through December. We have received some preliminary January numbers, and it looks like we're going to be up about 120,000 for January, with still a week to go, so that could go up a little higher. So that would give you five out of the first seven months of this fiscal year that were better than the prior year. Yes, sir.
I know you're moving right along, can you go back a couple slides? I thought I seen something right there. What is the all other? What does, what does that mean?
It's a combination of just miscellaneous items that total up to that 139, so.
Is that pretty normal, the 485.9?
It can be up, and some years it'll be down a little bit too. It's just, it's items that we either try to remain conservative, like this one, a big part of it's going to be interest earnings on investments for the general fund. We are always super conservative and budget very low numbers for that, and that's the bulk of this one.
Thank you, I thought it caught my eye as it was moving, and I wanted to, thank you.
No problem. On the state shared revenues, we're tracking right at 50%, and that's four categories. You have the state income tax, the state shared sales, the VLT, and actually the HERF is the fourth one, and that's in a different line item, but all those are tracking right on with the budget, so we're where we're expected to be. On the HERF revenues, also tracking at 50%. Fines and forfeitures, we're at 65.5%, so a little higher than expected. And airport revenues, on the leases and fees, we're almost at 100% on that one. Again, we kind of budget low on those. And the utility funds on our expenses with water, we're at 31.5%, so below where we're expected to be. With wastewater, it's tracking almost identical to the revenues, so that's a good number. And then sanitation, again, it's lagging a month, so it's showing 38, or 36%, but it'll be closer to 50 once we get all of December in. Our five-year chart for debt service, a couple of things I wanted to highlight on this one. We do have a couple that are going to be retiring within the next two years on our 2015 refinance where we did some road improvements. We did some work at the airport as a refinance and then we built our public safety building. We have two more payments on that one, which it's about 1.1 per year. The timing on that's going to be pretty good. So, we have one more payment in July of 2026 and then a payment July of 2027 and that one will be retired. And similarly for the streets budget, we did some streets improvements five years ago and we have two more payments on that one. So, that reduction in payment of $439,000 will help out the street budget a little bit. Any questions on the debt service? Like I said, just a brief summary for revenue and expenses. I'm happy to ask any, any questions that you may have.
Any questions? That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Justin.
Next item on the agenda is consent calendar. We're entertaining a motion for consideration of resolution number R 2025-05, consideration of the minutes of the Sholo City Council meeting, the study session on January 21st, budget study session on January 21st, and also the regular meeting of January 21st, 2025. Got a motion? I'll second it. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda and our new business, consideration of resolution number R 2025-06, approving inspection services agreement with Arizona Department of Housing and the Navajo County. Mr. Tergaskis?
Before we go, Mayor, I'm going to declare conflict on this matter given that Navajo County is one of my clients or my job, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. City of Sholo has had an agreement with the Arizona Department of Housing related to the permitting and inspection of manufactured homes and factory-built buildings within the city limits. This agreement allows the city to perform inspections and issue permits for the placement of manufactured homes and factory-built buildings that are installed within the city limits on behalf of the state. These permits or inspection and inspections are subject to state requirements and include such items as mandatory fee schedules, mandatory training at the city's cost, and mandatory reporting requirements. Most recent agreement has expired and is up for renewal. Based on the number of permits issued annually for manufactured home placements within the city, it has become impractical for the city to continue to offer this service. Staff reached out to representatives of Navajo County to discuss the possibility of entering into an agreement between the city and Navajo County, which would allow the county to issue permits and perform inspections of manufactured homes within the city limits. This would be similar to the service that the county is providing to other local jurisdictions and would allow our contractors and property owners to continue to work with a local presence for permitting and inspections. The Department of Housing has indicated that they would have no objection to this arrangement. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt resolution number R 2025-06, approving the inspection services agreement between the city and the state and entering into an agreement with Navajo County to issue and inspect manufactured homes and factory-built buildings within the city. The county would assume all responsibilities associated, including training and reporting as mandated by the state. Staff is available for questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Tergaskis. Questions or comments?
I have one question and I'll make motion to Phil. We talked about this in retreat, correct?
Yes.
Just making sure I'm on the same page.
Any questions?
I move to adopt resolution number R 2025-06, approving the inspection service agreement with Arizona Department of Housing and Navajo County.
Got a motion? I need a second. Got a second by Councilman Judd. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously with one sustaining. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of resolution number R 2025-07, abandonment of easement for Assessor Parcel number 210-14-050A. Mr. Tergaskis?
Mayor, I'm just bringing this up on the overhead, subject property map. City staff was recently approached by the owner of Assessor Parcel number APN 210-14-050A. This property lies directly east of the property acquired by the city as part of the Reedhead Home Purchase and is currently vacant. The property owner, Roger Hatch, on behalf of Ram Holdings Incorporated, is requesting to abandon an existing 15-foot-wide access easement, which cuts through their property and accesses a portion of the Reedhead Home Property owned by the city. This easement was created in 1957 and is recorded in docket 92, page 45 of Navajo County records in order to provide, quote, "a way of ingress and egress to and from said land", end quote. The owner of APN 210-14-050A is requesting that this easement be abandoned to better facilitate potential development of his property in the future. A review of this access easement and associated documentation indicates that there is no longer a need for this easement to access the city-owned property to the west. Staff recommends that the council adopt resolution number R 2025-07, abandoning an unnecessary access easement on APN 210-14-050A as described in docket 92, page 45, records of Navajo County. And we do have a map on the overhead showing the approximate location of that easement and the city-owned property that it accesses. With that, staff is available for questions.
Questions or comments?
I like a motion. I move to abandon the easement on Assessor Parcel number 210-14-050A as recorded in docket 92, page 45, records of Navajo County.
Got a motion? Got a second by Councilman Hatch? All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I bet nobody even knew there was an easement there. I mean, that's been there for a while. Alrighty, next item on the agenda is consideration of ordinance number R 2025-01, authorizing purchase of real property known as Assessor Parcel number 210-02-013E from a Catherine Schiller and approve the associated budget transfers. Leave, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city staff, we're always mindful of what our future needs are around the Sholo Cemetery and recently the city was approached by the owner of this property regarding the city's interest in purchasing the property that abuts our city cemetery. Property is located at 540 East Adams Place in Sholo, Assessor Parcel number 210-02-013E, approximately 0.3 of an acre. Also has an older, old home on the property and we would purchase the property as is. Believe that location is ideal to expand the city's cemetery in the future. With the city council's consent, we negotiated a price with the seller. The negotiated price is $100,000. Anticipated closing costs are approximately $2,000. Staff recommends adopting ordinance number 2025-01, authorizing the purchase of the real property at 540 East Adams Place and approving the associated budget transfers. And is indicated on the sheet, this would come from our, we had set some budget for future property acquisitions, so it would come from that budget.
Thanks, sir. Any questions? Questions, comments, motions? Councilman Wickel?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, sorry. I have your name right here, but I didn't look at it. unanimous consent, I'll have the city clerk read ordinance number 2025-01 by title unless all council members have a copy.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry about that.
My bad.
City of Sholo, ordinance number 2025-01, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Sholo, Arizona, authorizing the purchase of real property known as Assessor Parcel number 210-02-013E from a Catherine Schiller.
Thank you. One mistake a month, come on.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2025-01, authorizing the purchase of real property known as Assessor Parcel number 210-02-013E from a Catherine Schiller and approve associated budget transfers.
Got a motion? Need a second? Got a second by Councilman Adams? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. I'm so glad we always think ahead of the game. That's, that's a great buy right there. Summary of current events. Sir, please be careful out there. The only thing, oh, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I just want to, I want to thank Chief again. Thank you for letting us participate tonight in that. I think that was, that's one of my favorite things we do every year. So, thank you for letting the city council participate in that and thank Cameron Peterson for all the hard work that he does and your staff, Chief. I really do think that that was phenomenal and I feel like we are very blessed and lucky to be able to, to be a part of that with your staff. So, thank you for that. The other thing, last night, I had the opportunity to take my son to open gym at the, I don't know what we call it now, carpet gym, city campus gym, whatever. The gym over there at 620 East McNeil, it was great. I want to take the opportunity to thank Morgan and his staff and Jay Brimhall and the gals over at the Parks and Recreation Department for having that open gym. I went in there last night when I was registering my son for basketball. He got all excited and he was like, he's, you know, it was probably a week and a half, two weeks ago and he was like, when do we get to go play? When do we get to go play? When do we get to go play? And so, I told him open gym and last night I came home from work and he'd already had his stuff ready and he was ready to beeline it out there. And I went into that gym and there was probably, I don't know, I'm estimating 50 kids in there with their parents and with different people. And so, it was great to see that the vibe with these, the younger generation, it's palpable. It's like, it was cool to see these kids playing and, and getting out and, and participating in that. And, you know, was it yesterday or, I don't know, maybe it was Sunday. Sunday afternoon, I went over to the pickleball courts because of this unusual weather that we're having. Almost every single court was filled with people. It was insane. I was like, this isn't the second day of February. So, I want to thank, you know, our, our city staff and Morgan especially and the leadership that he had to make those facilities available to our citizens so that on days like that, obviously we're cognizant of fire danger and obviously we would love to have the moisture. But when we don't have that, that we have those facilities for our city, our, our kids to be able to use and our citizens. And then another final just note on that, yesterday, my wife had a couple of her nieces and nephews and she was like, I'm going to go to the park, went to the, to go to the splash pad, completely filled, went by, went to the, the city park, said there was over 100 kids there. So, it was, it's, it's really cool to see that our, our community are out and utilizing these facilities and that's what we want.
Is the water on over there?
No, the water wasn't on. We probably are going to have to run it so we can just keep the grass alive because we're not getting any rain or anything. But, but, but to see the community out in full force, it was really cool to see. So, thank you, Morgan, and thank city staff for us, for that.
You know, I think one thing that we forgot when we were thanking all the officers is their spouses.
Yeah.
And I completely spaced that, but to thank them for us, Chief, please, because I, I know when I was on the fire department and getting calls at 4:00 in the morning, it seems like my wife meets me at the door. So, please don't forget to thank them spouses, please. City Manager.
Thank you, Council. So, just real quick, one thing to report is we have, are accepting applications right now for any citizens interested in serving on the Sholo Aviation Advisory Committee, Board of Adjustment, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Applications are available at City Hall or on the city's website at sholoz.gov. Applications are due by Tuesday, February 25th at 5:00 PM to the city's clerk office, clerk's office. For more information, you can call 928-532-4061.
Can you ad lib a little, can you tell us how many opens we have on those? On, on all of them, if you don't mind?
So, I'm not sure. Rachel probably knows better than I, but I think there's two or three on each one that are up. Some, some of the people that are on there may reapply, but there may be some that don't reapply and so it may be an opening. And that kind of leads into our scheduling of meetings in a minute, but I'll let Rachel continue.
I believe most of them have three openings. I don't know exactly off the top of my head, but yeah, most of them have three openings at least.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Alrighty, next item on the agenda is executive session. I need a motion to go into executive session. We'll discuss consult for legal advisory. Oh, I've got a, got a motion by Councilman Hack, second by Councilman Adams. All those in favor? All those opposed? We're going to executive session.